I'm Tracy Sabena. On behalf of all of our co-hosts, thanks so much to everyone for joining us today. It's been almost exactly 100 days since the news broke of an alleged $61 million bribery scandal spearheaded by former Ohio House Speaker Larry Householder surrounding House Bill 6. Even before the scandal became front page news, House Bill 6 was widely opposed by Ohioans because it bails out nuclear and coal plants at a cost of over $1 billion to Ohio consumers, puts 114,000 clean energy jobs at risk, and strips away clean energy programs that have protected Ohioans' health during this pandemic. Despite the fact that the bill was part of what is likely the largest bribery scheme ever perpetrated against the state of Ohio, and that multiple public opinion polls found that an overwhelming majority of Ohioans want the bill to be fully and immediately repealed, this bad bill remains in place. The Ohio House Select Committee on Energy Policy and Oversight was created to consider a clean repeal of House Bill 6, but the committee did not invite the public to testify on either House Bill 746 or House Bill 738, the two bills that would repeal House Bill 6, before hearings were suspended until further notice. Ohioans can't afford to wait to have their voices heard on why this bill is bad for their health, their pocketbooks, and their economic future. Our legislators have failed us in demonstrating the leadership we deserve. That is why these hearings have been organized, to ensure the public is part of the discussion. These hearings should have been conducted by Ohio lawmakers, but they chose not to hear from you. We are grateful you have chosen to join us today to share your thoughts. If you know of someone who would like to provide remarks, please let them know we will be holding one additional hearing on Thursday, October 29th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Just look for registration details in the chat box. Now, for everyone's information, your audio and video feeds will only be live during the time of your testimony. You will be unmuted when it is time for your remarks, and you will see a transition on your screen as your camera goes live. It may look like you've been removed from the Zoom, but you've not. Give it just a moment, and you will then be visible to begin speaking. Make sure your camera is turned on so that you can be seen. Response to these hearings has been overwhelming, so we ask that you limit your comments to a total of two minutes to ensure everyone has a chance to speak. You will see one of our meeting chairs raise a flag when you have 15 seconds remaining. Today's hearing is being recorded to be shared with Ohio lawmakers and others, and our meeting chairs reserve the right to remove an attendee or mute their microphone if that individual is being disruptive to the meeting. This would include an excessive use of provanity, discriminatory language, and similar activities. We will only be taking comments from those who have pre-registered to speak tonight, and we will be announcing three speakers at a time to give you a sense of when you'll be unmuted to speak. If you have a question for our chairs during the event, please feel free to just type it in the chat box. This process is as new to us as it may be to many of you, but we appreciate everyone's patience and cooperation, and we look forward to hearing from all of those speaking today. Before we begin, I would like to recognize and thank legislators who have signed up to listen to testimony today. We're being joined by State Representative Jessica Miranda of Forest Park, Representative David Greenspan of Westlake, and Representative Bridget Kelly of Cincinnati. Thanks again for being part of our event tonight. And with that, we are ready to get started. Our first witness up today will be Dr. William Hardy. He will be followed by Melanie Houston and Rachel Bells. Dr. Hardy, you may begin.
Okay. My name is William Hardy. I am speaking in favor of a full repeal of House Bill 6. I'm a pediatric pulmonologist who has worked 30 years at Cincinnati Children's Hospital. In my practice, I see children with a variety of respiratory ailments. These illnesses range from common disorders such as asthma to less common, but equally if not more severe, respiratory ailments such as cystic fibrosis, chronic lung disease of children born prematurely, and children who are dependent on ventilators from a host of other conditions. I can say with absolute conviction that the air quality directly impacts the health of all these children. I've seen children worsen in days when our air quality is poor, and the parents of my patients consistently report their children struggle when the air quality index worsens. What I'm telling you is nothing novel, and has been reported again and again in hosts of epidemiologic studies. I want you to know that the impact of air quality resonates far greater when you see this up close, and I certainly wish those individuals making decisions which impact the air quality standards could see what I've seen. The connection between House Bill 6, clean air standards, and human health cannot be overstated. Deregulating Ohio's renewable portfolio standard and energy efficiency resource standard will lead to a significant increase in air pollutants. Increasing air pollutants will lead to more disease. The need to maximize our lung health is more important now than ever before, considering current events. As I'm sure everyone is aware, COVID-19 can directly damage the lung. The combination of any respiratory pathogen with air pollutants compounds the injury to the lung, increasing morbidity and mortality. Future threats to our respiratory health will invariably continue and may accelerate, which is exactly why we absolutely must make changes for that which we can control, including reducing fossil fuel consumption in Ohio. Policies which will improve the air quality are undoubtedly wise and essential investments for everyone's physical and economic health. As a pediatric pulmonologist and advocate for children's health, I call on Ohio legislators to protect Ohioans' right to clean air by fully repealing House Bill 6.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hardy. We really appreciate you being with us tonight. Our next speaker is Melanie Houston. After Melanie, we will hear from Rachel Bells and Diane Bonner. Hi, Melanie, you're up.
Good evening, Tracy. Thank you. My name is Melanie Houston, and I am a council member at large representing the community of Grandview Heights. And in our community of approximately 7,000 residents, we have an active sustainability group and a large constituency who favors sustainable and forward-looking policies. In fact, this year, our city council unanimously supported the adoption of residential property-assessed clean energy after community members brought the policy to our legislative body. I also am the mother of two young children. I have a seven-year-old daughter and a two-year-old son. My children face a more uncertain future than perhaps any other generation of Americans due to the climate crisis. And we deserve elected leaders who are working for us and working for our children's future. Unfortunately, House Bill 6 is legislation that neither helps our communities nor our children. While cities like Grandview Heights, Worthington, and Bexley have been passing policies such as community choice aggregation and residential property-assessed clean energy, or R-PACE, the Ohio Legislature has been undermining this local work and moving us backward in time. In fact, thanks to House Bill 6, at the beginning of October, Ohioans lost the ability to take advantage of incentives and rebates that previously helped them save money on electric bills by reducing energy consumption. These changes not only undercut programs that local elected officials like me are working hard to put in place, but they also come at a time when Ohioans are struggling to pay basic household bills due to the economic impacts of COVID. House Bill 6 has wasted our time and our taxpayer dollars and taken us in the wrong direction by killing our energy efficiency and renewable energy standards. Ohioans were overwhelmingly opposed to this bill, and yet it passed through the legislature and was signed by the governor. The state lawmakers in power passed this bill without consideration for the good work that's being done in the local communities across our state and without regard for our children's future. And worse, as many of us suspected all along, the billion-dollar bailout that was pushed through the General Assembly appears to have been fueled by corruption. Now is the time to hold these bad actors accountable. I stand in solidarity with the majority of my constituents demanding that Ohio lawmakers immediately repeal House Bill 6. We need our lawmakers to get to work and to take their cues from Ohio's locally elected leaders. Repeal House Bill 6 in its entirety and restart the discussion regarding what good clean energy policy looks like for all Ohioans. Anything less than a full repeal of House Bill 6 is unacceptable. Thank you for your time and for your attention.
Thank you so much, Melanie. We appreciate you being with us tonight. Next, we will hear from Rachel Bells, who will be followed by Diane Bonner and Gary Swanson. Rachel?
Hello? Okay. Hi, my name is Rachel Bells. I'm the Director of the Ohio Consumers Power Alliance, a nonpartisan statewide consumer advocacy alliance focused on keeping electric rates low by diversifying Ohio's energy portfolio. I'm also a resident of the city of Cincinnati, where we've prioritized supporting clean energy for our city's electricity for nearly a decade. We're very proud to be building the largest municipal solar array in the nation in nearby Highland County. Just this morning, I was in attendance at a press conference held by the cities of Cincinnati and Columbus, who joined together to file a lawsuit to stop the state from collecting utility fees associated with House Bill 6, fees that would cost Cincinnati residents an additional $10 million a year, and Columbus residents an additional $25 million per year, all because the FirstEnergy companies corralled $61 million into their corruption and bribery scheme to get HB6 passed at all. While I support this lawsuit, it shouldn't be necessary. It's not at all shocking who they filed suit against. The lawsuit filed today in Franklin County Common Pleas Court names FirstEnergy Corporation, Ohio Public Utilities Commission Chairman Sam Randazzo, and State Treasurer Robert Spring. It seeks a court injunction to block the new fee. The bigger question, though, is during a pandemic that currently has no end, and with all the economic uncertainty in Ohioans' lives, why should we continue to pay for FirstEnergy and Larry Householder's bribes and greed? Where does the buck actually stop here in Ohio? It could stop with the legislature, who initially passed this at the end of the nasty HB6 fight by only one vote. It seems like it could stop with Governor DeWine, who says he supports all energy sources, but signed HB6 as quickly as he could. So where does the buck stop in Ohio? God help us if the buck stops with FirstEnergy and Energy Harbor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rachel. All right, our next speakers will be Diane Bonner, Gary Swanson, and Catherine Augustine. Diane? I think we're getting closer.
Okay. Did you get my first paragraph? Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted, but your camera is not on.
Yes.
Oh, there you are. No, you're fine. As I said before, this is new for all of us, but we can see you and hear you, so go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Diane Bonner, and I live in Mansfield, Ohio. Senator Larry Obhoff is my state senator, as well as president of the Senate, or not yet president of the Senate, and I wanted to hear what I and the others have to say today. I'm here today because of the inaction of the Ohio Legislature to connect corruption and theft of HB6 to correct, I'm sorry, to correct the corruption. It's a stain on our Ohio Legislature that has cheated utility commercials out of utility consumers out of $61 million and questionable profits incoming for, beginning in 2021, of $900 million. That's the number that boggled me, 900 million. It is also a matter of great concern how this will be corrected, because, as has been stated, nothing has been done, nothing has happened. There's been no action to repeal HB6, including no opportunity to testify for Ohioans to testify on the impact of this legislation on our families, including children, the contamination of land and water, including the pollution of air, which brings me to the impact of certain types of utility generation that have an impact on the health of our children. Air pollution, nuclear waste can destroy our lungs and give us cancer, as stated earlier by the doctor. Allowing outdated plants to continue operating can and does send children to a lifetime of illness and for even one too many early death. I know what it is like to live with pollution-induced asthma. Our children deserve better. I urge Senator Obhoff, the leaders of the Ohio Legislature, to stand up for Ohioans to end the secrecy surrounding HB6, including the corruption that it has enabled, and to look at Ohio Energy Utilities through the lenses of science and the common good, while flushing out, then eliminating, the atmosphere that allowed this corruption to happen in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Thanks for being on tonight to speak specifically to Senator Obhoff.
Thank you.
I would now like to introduce Mr. Gary Swanson. Mr. Swanson is the president and owner of Energy Management Solutions, a company who directly felt the impact of the lack of leadership and uncertainty that resulted from House Bill 6. Given his unique role, Mr. Swanson's testimony might run past the two-minute window allotted to the rest of our speakers. We thank you for your understanding, and we look forward to hearing this important perspective. Mr. Swanson?
Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the time. Thank you, Tracy. Yeah, my name is Gary Swanson. I'm the owner of Energy Management Solutions. We're a consulting firm that work with about 250 industrial commercial customers in the state of Ohio. They represent maybe 25,000 or so employees. And we've been working in Ohio for the last 10 years, helping them find ways to reduce their energy costs and to be able to compete with the neighboring states that are out there. House Bill 6 unfortunately has made us one of the casualties of this war where we've pulled our shop out of Ohio. We've closed our office, so we had an apartment there, had employees, just because of the uncertainty that we're seeing in the energy policy in Ohio. Every year, there's a new law that's coming through or a bill trying to get passed that is going to drastically change this. And I think we really need to look at that energy policy going forward and see what's best for the state. But we have had to pull out, and it's really sad because just about every company out there still has the ability to save another 30% of their energy costs. But as they say, low-hanging fruit has been plucked. We need those rebates to help get to that next level of fruit on that tree. And that is there. It's waiting for these industrial and commercial customers to save that energy. If they don't do that, and there's no rebates available, their neighboring states are going to do that, and they're going to use their rebate programs, and they're going to not be able to compete in the marketplace. So it's really, really unfair. When you look at 82,000 jobs in Ohio alone that are impacted in this energy field, it's really mind-boggling to think that the legislators would allow this to happen and impact that. Now with COVID, why can't we get this bill repealed? We all agree it has to be repealed. They're corrupt the way this got approved. I testified before. No one is listening. We know why now. So it's unfair to say we're going to lose a good chunk of those 82,000 jobs now when they're saying, "Well, let's look at the 1,400 jobs for FirstEnergy and Energy Harbor." So we really need to look at the big picture here. And even more importantly, when we look at the cost, our industrial customers are actually going to increase costs with House Bill 6 or something that might be similar as a replacement. We're looking at a 6,000 KW load is going to see increased costs of about $91,000. Now, that's a lot. A lot of people are saying the costs are going to go down, and that's just not the case. We have to look at all the impacts. But more importantly, that same company has the ability to save $1 million a year in energy by utilizing some of these conservation programs that are being closed this year. So that is much bigger picture for the companies and keeping people in the state, having more people like us not leave the state. And if we can come up with a new energy policy that is a good policy for the state, it's going to bring people like us back, or all the people in the renewable field right now. How are you going to build solar, wind, other great renewable resources when you don't even know if that policy is going to change tomorrow? So I really urge everyone to look at repealing this right away. Take your time. Look at ways that we can find a new energy policy. It's not going to happen overnight, but don't rush to repeal and replace, and then just say, "Okay, FirstEnergy, too bad, all the stuff that has taken place, but you did win at the end." So I appreciate everyone's time and look forward to hearing the rest of the speakers.
Thanks so much, Gary. We really appreciate you taking your time this evening to share that important story. All right, our next three speakers will be DeeDee Geiss, Rick Hamilton, and Tom Bullock. DeeDee, are you with us?
Hello, Casey. Can you see me now?
We can see you and hear you, yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is DeeDee Geissi, and I am the Ohio Sierra Club Political Committee Chair. But today, I am going to be stating my personal point of view. And for everyone's reference, I do live here in Worcester, Ohio. And thank you for the opportunity to comment upon HB6 today. As noted by others, what a disgrace it is that the legislature has not invited the public to testify on the repeal of HB6. Folks, HB6 is a bad bill. It's a bad bill because it's tainted by corruption, bribery, racketeering, and scandal to do a bad thing. It propels up the dirty fuel industries of nuclear and coal. You know, I talked to candidates, campaigns, and voters all across Ohio. I listen. I listened to their outrage over the scandal and the stench of HB6, their words. I hear candidates who are confused, ill-informed, rushed to vote, and now dealing with the knowledge that they either came out on the right side of this and voted against HB6, or they came out on the wrong side and regret supporting HB6. I've heard the fears that before the end of this is over and the list of indictments and reach of the scandal, it will be so big, it will fill a giant highway billboard. So now the legislators are facing the consequence at the ballot box of bad Bill HB6 to hide from the voters' outrage. The repeal is being postponed until after the election. Look, folks, the truth is that bad Bill HB6 has always been a bad idea. Nuclear is not clean. The investors in FirstEnergy Solutions and Energy Harbor are speculating on a public bailout and bad Bill HB6 to line their pockets with undue economic rents from jumps in stock prices and investments in bonds. It's a scummy bond sale. Just look who sits on Energy Harbor's board. The state of Ohio should not be investing the retirement money for teachers, police officers, firefighters, public employees, and bad bonds for Energy Harbor. Ohio needs to divest from dirty fuels and their destructive legacy. Davis-Bessey and Perry Nuclear Power Plants are among the world's most dangerous, and they need to be decommissioned immediately. They are a money pit, and our citizens and retirees should not have their money dragged down into the pit. I encourage the legislature and the governor not just to repeal bad Bill HB6, but to do better for Ohioans. I am a person in the renewables and energy efficiency industries. I urge the support of a clean energy economy. Bad Bill HB6 should be repealed immediately, without delay, to allow legislators who are up for election to hide from their records. Voters should vote. The sponsors of HB6 out of office. After bad Bill HB6 is gone, never to return, we need to leave behind the dirty fuels industries of coal, fracked gas, and dangerous nuclear. The future of solar, wind, and energy efficiency needs to come sooner rather than later, and our legislature and governor need to enact incentives to make this happen now, not 10, not 20, not 30 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you, DeeDee. We appreciate your time tonight and your words. Next up, we're going to hear from Rick Hamilton, who will be followed by Tom Bullock and Mary Counter. Rick?
We are?
You're all set to go, yes.
Okay. My name is Rick Hamilton. I am a retired managing editor and educator living in Cleveland, Ohio. I want to thank Dave Roberts for his July 2019 Vox article on HB6. It well summarized the problems of the bill and helped me in putting together what I'm about to read. Ohio's HB6 forces Ohio taxpayers to support four power plants by subsidizing two nuclear power plants and two antiquated coal plants. An equally damaging action of HB6 is the reduction of renewable and energy efficiency standards, which harm both Ohio's citizens and our economy. Ohio had one of the oldest renewable portfolio standards in the country, which required it to get to 12.5% of its generated power from renewables by 2027. HB6 reduced that by 33% to 8.5% by 2026. It also exempts large industrial customers, kills the standard after 2026, and effectively nullifies any incentive for new renewable energy development in our state. The closure of existing nuclear power plants does present a problem. Each shuttered plant takes a gigawatt or two of low-carbon energy off the grid, just when we need low-carbon energy. The workers in those plants and the communities around them deserve a transition plan. New York, Illinois, and New Jersey all have figured ways to keep their nuclear plants running longer while also boosting renewable energy and efficiency. In each of those states, it was an alliance of nuclear and renewable supporters that pushed solutions forward. That type of alliance has a future, and has a future in Ohio. HB6, however, must now be completely repealed and steps taken to support and train workers affected by any eventual closures. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. We appreciate you being with us tonight. Our next speaker will be Tom Bullock, who will be followed by Mary Counter and Julie Loneman. Hi, Tom. Welcome.
Hi, how are you? I am just getting back from picking up a kid and getting my screen up. Give me one sec so I can actually get my statement going. Okay. Good evening. I'm Tom Bullock, Executive Director of the Citizens Utility Board of Ohio, or Cub Ohio. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan consumer watchdog that advocates for residential and small business utility customers. Our mission is to educate consumers to reduce their utility bills as well as to work for energy that's affordable, reliable, and clean. Our membership lives across the state, and we are growing rapidly. Ohio House Bill 6, or HB6, is a law produced by what federal prosecutors rightly describe as the "largest bribery money laundering scheme ever perpetrated against the people of the state of Ohio." Since January 1 of this year, Ohioans have already been forced to subsidize two uncompetitive coal plants, one of which is in Indiana. And on January 1 of next year, House Bill 6 will begin charging Ohioans a whole lot more, more than $1 billion to subsidize two FirstEnergy nuclear plants. Today, an important step was taken to protect Ohio electric utility customers. The cities of Cincinnati and Columbus sued the state of Ohio to stop the collection of a nuclear subsidy fee as an unconstitutional tax without public benefit. Many Cub Ohio members have told us they view House Bill 6 charges as unfair. Here's a few quotes from them. "I'm a widowed senior who is squeezing every penny to pay my bills, but no one is subsidizing my bottom line." Another person said, "I object to being forced to subsidize dirty coal plants while politicians pocket bribe money." And the third said, "We work hard for our money all our lives. Give us back what's due to us." We certainly agree. We call upon every Ohio city to join Columbus and Cincinnati in this legal action to address House Bill 6's unconstitutional $1 billion tax on consumers. While Ohioans suffer from the COVID-19 public health crisis, it's not right to force them to pay more on their monthly bills for a corrupt bailout of FirstEnergy. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We appreciate you being with us tonight and those great words. Next up, we have Mary Counter, followed by Julie Loneman, and then Patrick McCullough. Ah, Mary, we can see you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mary Counter, and I live in Columbus, Ohio. It's my job at my age to consider my legacy. I will protest the largest bribery money laundering scheme ever perpetrated against Ohioans. This was so obviously corrupt when I testified before, as though I was talking to cardboard cutouts, not human beings who care about my needs and... cutouts, not human beings who care about my needs and those of my grandchildren. No one should profit from this corruption and gutting of Ohio's clean energy and efficiency goals while bailing out old, dirty coal plants. Coal and nuclear power are not sustainable and cost-effective for the green future we want to see as citizens. We almost do our part to fight climate change starting today. That means it was never okay for Ohio, for the Ohio Clean Energy and Energy Efficiency Goals to be stripped away in this bill. I do not want to pay these charges for 11 years to prop up coal plants when I'm ill with asthma. Who would not want better air for their family? We need a plan to do this now. We should not pay for bad decisions that First Energy and Energy Harbor perpetrated while making millions in a regulated monopoly. These are bad actors who are only paid if we pay this 85 cents per month fee. Hot off the presses today, I see Columbus and Cincinnati are going to sue to get an injunction against an unconstitutional tax because it's based on a fraud. It is time to hold public officials accountable and companies accountable to the people they are supposed to represent. Take action today to repeal House Bill Six.
Thank you, Mary. We really appreciate you being with us tonight. Good to see you. All right, next we will hear from Julie Loneman, who will be followed by Patrick McCullough and Amira McDuffie. Julie? Oh, Julie, we've got you on mute.
Okay.
There you go. Now we can hear you.
Great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Julie Loneman and I live in Cincinnati. I'm an artist and my husband is a teacher. We're not wealthy people, but within the last five years, with the help of federal, state, and local programs, we've installed solar panels on our home and purchased a plug-in hybrid car. We're doing what we can to reduce our carbon footprint because we desperately care about the future our children and our grandchildren will inherit. And we appreciate the public support, which put these actions within our reach. I believe that enlightened public policy has a critical role to play in weaning us from our unsustainable dependence on fossil fuels. Though we are limited in what we can do as individuals, acting together, we can change the trajectory that is leading to a rapidly warming planet. Our actions today are determining the quality of life our descendants will experience. That's why the passage of House Bill Six was distressing to me. Like the majority of Ohioans, I oppose this corporate bailout paid for by consumers and taxpayers. Additionally, by gutting Ohio's clean energy mandates, this bill was a real step backward environmentally. When I later discovered that this bill was passed thanks to $61 million in bribes, I was even more appalled. Now, despite repeated calls for its repeal, the Ohio legislature refuses to act. By placing corporate greed above the common good, Ohio lawmakers are destroying our confidence in their ability to represent us and proving once again that in politics, it's often money that matters most. House Bill Six passed by one vote. If just one legislator was swayed by the $61 million spent by special interests, this bill should not have passed. Only a complete repeal of this corrupt legislation can restore Ohioans' trust in their elected representatives. And thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Julie. We really appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight. Our next speaker will be Patrick McCullough, followed by Amira McDuffie and Ella Modi. We'll give Patrick just a moment. And there he is. Patrick, welcome.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak my piece. So I'll just read what I read here. Dear Ohio State Representatives, please listen to the citizens of Ohio repeal House Bill Six. House Bill Six is a sham and a disgrace. It only passed through the actions crooked politicians who bribed and bought off by First Energy. I hope they all receive just punishment and serve time in jail. There's no such law should be allowed to stand. You know, and climate change is real and it's threatening all life on our planet. It's a crisis. NASA scientists led the way in teaching us why it is happening, what we need to do to stop it. You can find this information on their website at climate.naust.co. They are very well-educated people. They have no political agenda. They have concluded that scientific evidence for warming of the climate is unequivocal. The current warming trend has a particular significance because most of it is extremely likely greater than 95% probability to result in human activity since the mid-20th century and proceeding at a rate that is unprecedented in over decades to the millennia. To stop climate change and destruction of the planet and all life on it, we need to stop burning fossil fuels. We need to shift our focus on maximizing our use of solar, wind, and geothermal energy. And to do this, we need to not only restore the funding for the efficiency and clean energy programs that were stripped away by House Bill Six, but make it more robust. These programs are saving us money and will save us even more money the more we invest in it. It will create healthy new jobs for many Ohioans, eliminate the risk for the environmental catastrophes and health hazards associated with the mining, refining, transportation, and burning of fossil fuels and uranium. It will enable us to mitigate and reverse the adverse effects of burning fossil fuels that burning fossil fuels have on the health of our planet and the creatures living on it. It will give us the best chance to leave the world a better place than it is now for our children, their children, and to future generations. Coal, oil, and natural gas are limited natural resources. Nuclear energy is inherently very dangerous. We don't need one. We don't want them. Now imagine a world where every home and business has solar panels generating most, if not all, the electricity needed with battery packs, battery packs storing unused energy generated during the daylight hours, where the air we breathe and water we drink is clean, pure, and safe, and there's no coal ash we need to dispose of, where there are no oil scales contaminating our waterways, our lands, and our oceans, and where the mountains and forests are left intact for everyone to enjoy. It's not a pipe dream. You know, it's a reality we can make happen. And think about this for a minute. The Earth gets more solar energy in one hour than the entire world uses in a year, and it's free. You know, we just need to do a better job of that. So please repeal this bill. Repeal, repeal this bill and put the money into green energy.
Patrick, thank you. Really appreciate your time tonight and your words. All right, next we're going to hear from Amira McDuffie, followed by Ella Modi and Linda New. Amira, we can see you. You're all set to go.
Good evening. My name is Amira McDuffie and I'm a fellow with ACE Alliance for Climate Education. I'm a 14-year-old living in Cleveland, Ohio, where the average carbon footprint per household is an outstanding 50 tons. I've been personally affected by the quickly changing climate, and I'd like to change this narrative for young children in my community and future generations. However, House Bill Six is not creating the changes we need. This illegal bribe was a selfish act that is putting the lives of many Ohioans, young and old, at risk. My grandmother also has complications with asthma due to unacceptable quality of air. The way that House Bill Six was carried out was unacceptable, to say the least. This bill was passed on $61 million in bribes. Ohioans were lied to about nearly every aspect of the House Bill Six. Personal gain should never come before Ohioan lives. This bill was founded on lies and it must be repealed. This bill was never intended to benefit the climate or the greater majority of Ohioans. Legislatures who voted this bailout were some of the region's dirtiest coal plants and were not interested in reducing carbon emissions with their vote. In fact, this bill was never voted on by the general public. It is time that the government officials, like government officials, to value human lives over the value of money. Hard-working Americans in Ohio are what keep the state moving forward. We want progress. This climate is changing and we need to change in order to make a difference. Repealing House Bill will save American lives. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Amira, thank you so much for being with us. It's great to hear your perspective. You did a wonderful job. Make sure you keep speaking out. Speaking of speaking out, we would encourage anyone who would be interested in speaking on Thursday at our hearing from 5:30 to 7:30 to register using the link that has been dropped into the chat. I know we have several folks who are listening in tonight and not speaking, and we would love to hear from you on Thursday. So please take that opportunity to click on that link and register for Thursday's hearing. Also, if you're listening tonight and you would like to tweet out at anything that you're hearing tonight, tweet at legislators, make sure that you're sharing the message that you're hearing from our witnesses tonight. We would truly appreciate that of using the hashtag letthepublicspeak. All right, our next speaker tonight after Amira is Ella Modi, who will be followed by Linda New and Brian Schmidt. Ella?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Ella and I'm 15. I'm an Alliance for Climate Education Cleveland Fellow. At this moment, I can't imagine what my future looks like because what I'm seeing now tells me that politicians have not stepped up. My elected officials aren't fighting for my future, a future safe from climate change. I wrote a spoken word piece about a year ago when I felt anger towards my elected officials for not taking action on climate change. Recently, after hearing about the corruption of House Bill Six, the most regressive energy bill in the country, I was reminded of my spoken word piece. I was reminded of the anger that I felt for years. I'm going to perform my spoken word piece. We've made a claim to the earth. We've called it our own. Greedy little beings sitting on a throne. We thought we'd be invincible to the destruction we create, but it's coming back around. It's coming fast and straight. We're monsters, eating the world up like it's ours to consume. Cities down in flames, children choking on fumes. Century defined by floods, continuing our path towards no more food, chained to our reliance on fossil fuels, champions of our certain doom. We've dug our graves to lie and the scales losing balance. We're running out of time. It's ignorance to turn our heads. We don't make an effort. We take advantage of the beauty now but have no inclination to disallow destruction of the land, destruction of the world, my future, our future, and the blood is on our hands. We're faced every day with the choice to put our differences aside for the cause of our lives, to stop gambling and hoping the dice will land on the right side. To politicians, are you the judge residing in my courtroom deciding my fate? Death sentence, is that the penalty? Are you just going to pull the world right from under my feet, doing all your dirty work, so discreet? But we've caught you right in the act. We're going to set you up on the right track. If the leaders don't step up, they need to step aside, make way for the youth, the revolutions on the rise. So yes, we are coming. We are finding our way. Time to stand as people today. Shake the ground, make a rumble. We aren't going to listen to the people leading us astray. We need to build a new legacy, a legacy to repair a broken system, one where we are setting ourselves up to be the victim. Because I'm tired. I'm scared of this messed up world. I have more of a vision of what we could become. This movement is about something bigger than us. This is for justice, for opportunity, for security. This is for humanity. So now I'm asking my elected officials to completely and immediately repeal House Bill Six. Thank you.
Oh, Ella, thank you so much. You've given me chills, but more importantly, you've actually given me some hope. So thank you for sharing that. I really, really appreciate you being with us tonight. All right, next we are going to hear from Linda New, who will be followed by Brian Schmidt and Akshay Singh. Hi, Linda, we can see you.
All right. Um, all right. I am a resident of Homestead Falls and an environmental activist. I am acutely aware of the long-term costs of old polluting energy generation and the immediate need for a just transition to clean, sustainable power. As far back as 2016, First Energy lobbied unsuccessfully for a Davis Bessie and Perry Nuclear Power bailout. The request failed to gain the support of the Ohio legislature or the Ohio voters. However, in July 2019, House Bill Six was pushed through the Ohio General Assembly using misinformation and dishonest tactics stemming from 501(c)(4) groups like Generation Now that are funded through undisclosed donors. House Bill Six uses taxpayer money to bolster two outdated nuclear power plants in Ohio and two coal-fired power plants in Ohio and Indiana. Over $150 million a year will be handed to two nuclear power plants over the next six years, and $60 million a year will be spent on two coal-fired power plants over the next 10 years. The legislation allows for a fee to be added to every electricity bill in the state, and it nearly eliminates the renewable energy and energy efficiency standards in Ohio. Ohioans overwhelmingly opposed House Bill Six, and last year they worked to put the measure on the ballot before it could be enacted. Consumers, taxpayers, environmental groups, the clean energy sector, and the natural gas industry joined in opposition to this corrupt legislation. The grassroots referendum to stop House Bill Six was blocked with twisted narratives that obscured the intent of the bill and concealed the need for it to be repealed. The shift backwards to polluting coal and nuclear power damages our clean energy sector and it eliminates secure, well-paying jobs in solar and wind energy generation. Energy efficiency provides savings to Ohioans while moving us towards a greener and safer economy. Iowa is a great opportunity to develop sustainable solar and wind energy production. Outdated companies need to change or step aside and allow Ohioans to build our sustainable energy sector while protecting our air, water, and soil. Former Speaker Larry Householder and four others were arrested in July 2020 on charges of racketeering and bribery in connection with the passage of House Bill Six. Their crimes included receiving $60 million in their own personal accounts to ensure that First Energy stockholders and their affiliates would benefit. Householder has been removed rightly from the position of Speaker of the House. Members of the General Assembly have proposed multiple bills that would reverse the damage done by House Bill Six. However, in the past three months, no, since the arrest, no action has been taken by the General Assembly. House Bill 738, currently in the House Select Committee on Energy Policy and Oversight Committee, proposes the necessary repeal of House Bill Six. It's been co-sponsored by over 40 members of the Ohio House of Representatives. House Bill 738 needs to be passed to remove last year's corrupt and damaging law and to put Ohio back on the path to leadership with a strong, clean energy sector. Done.
Linda, thank you. I really appreciate you being with us tonight. Next, we're going to hear from Brian Schmidt, followed by Akshay Singh. Not yet. You're still on mute, Brian.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Oh, Akshay, hold on just one second. We're trying to get with, Brian Schmidt is next on our list. We're just having a little audio problem. Okay, well, hold on, Brian. Don't go anywhere. We will go on to the next one. We'll try to fix your, try to fix your audio. Okay, Akshay, let's go ahead and have you go, and then we will, we'll try Mr. Schmidt again. Thank you so much for being with us.
Great, thank you. It's good to be here with everybody. My name is Akshay Singh. I'm a resident of Cleveland Heights. I'm a soccer coach, and my testimony is that Ohioans deserve an immediate repeal to HB six. I testified against HB six in May of 2019 to Chairman Nino Vitale, who has since shown Ohio as public that he's unfit to hold office. Vitale has shown utter contempt for those who have or do face electricity shut-offs and oversaw hearings on massive public policy that was entirely bereft of either financial or scientific basis during the hearings. All this corruption in plain sight has come to a head this past July, as many people have said, and the indictment is Speaker Householder. I live in First Energy territory, and since the passage of SBE 221 in 2008, First Energy has been categorically against the expansion of energy efficiency, renewable energy, and demand response, all of which make the cheapest energy available in PJM's capacity markets, the territory that we exist under, in wholesale energy markets. So First Energy is reliance on giant baseload capacity, nuclear and coal plants that have been underperforming, given Ohio's Wild West natural gas expansion. They have been taking those failures of that reliance on baseload out on Ohio's They have been taking those failures, that reliance on baseload out on Ohio's ratepayers, specifically us FirstEnergy ratepayers and on the Ohio's clean energy sector. FirstEnergy was caught overcharging customers like me 10 to 15 times market rate for renewables acquisitions that they had to make for their ratepayers under SB 221. They were subsequently let off the hook for repaying me and others those charges by the Ohio Supreme Court, judges who collect tens of thousands in political contributions from FirstEnergy without being refused to recuse themselves from those hearings. Just a year after this favorable rating, as many people have said, we know FirstEnergy has leveraged their massive political contributions, legal and illegal, to finally deal a fatal blow to the energy efficiency and renewable standards, those standards which saved over $5 billion in utility bills for Ohio, according to Ohio Consumers Council and reported by the utilities themselves to the PUCO. Ohioans should not hand over a dime to FirstEnergy without full and unfettered access to their full financial profile with complete transparency handed over to the state. A full guarantee of employment for workers, all workers, at current and vulnerable plants. A complete moratorium on utility shut-offs for residents during COVID. Bill forgiveness for low-income families having trouble to pay their bills because we know that they have, FirstEnergy has $60 million to give away in bribes that they sure as hell don't need to collect on low-income families right now. And we need to see multiple years of full compliance with renewed and aggressively enhanced energy efficiency and renewable standards sufficient to decarbonize Ohio's economy by 2030. Anything less would be a waste of Ohioans' precious resources, our money, our wages, and our time. Time that is running out to prevent catastrophic climate change that is sowing destruction now across the globe. FirstEnergy must be held accountable for their racketeering schemes, which are only one instance of this massively anti-democratic political agenda that we saw from their limiting HB6 referendum, from the canvases and harassing people on the streets. And we need them to be held accountable because indeed, FirstEnergy reaps massive returns on investment on their political assets that they procure versus making any investments in the actual energy sector. Ohio families and workers require relief during these harrowing, and support during these harrowing times. Pandemic has claimed over 5,000 Ohioans this year. We cannot accept anything less than a repeal, a full repeal of HB6 and a bill that again renews and aggressively enhances our clean energy sector, underwriting good union employment and community resilience from community reinvestment in our state. Thank you.
Thank you, Akshay. We appreciate you being with us tonight. All right, I think we're going to have Brian log off and try to come back on to see if we can get his, his audio working. So we are going to move on then to Rosio Mino and then Ronald Sovak and Jenny Williams. And I apologize if I've mispronounced your name. All right, well, Brian, why don't we try you one more time? All right, we can see you. Can we hear you this time? No, oh, I'm so sorry. All right, well, if we figure something out, we will certainly let you know. Just hang tight there with us. Okay, well, let's see if we can move on though. Rosio Mino, are you with us? No, all right, well, let's go ahead then and move on to Ronald Sovak. We can always come back around for the rest of our, of our speakers. Ronald, are you with us? Ronald, we can see you. All right, you are on mute as well. Can you click off so we can hear you?
All right, now?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. My name's Ron Sovak. I'm a retired electrical engineer and I built control systems for numerous power plants in the 70s, coal-burning plants. And I moved on to advanced pollution projects and alternate energies, among a myriad of other types of controls. I live in an area that's in Concord, Ohio. I get my power from Painesville Electric, but I'm in site of nuclear Perry Plant run by FirstEnergy. My objections to House Bill 6 are first that the demise of these plants is certain. The nuclear plants have a finite life and they're uneconomical. If this House Bill 6, if it subsidizes them, will eventually have to be replaced because they won't, when it runs out, they will not operate it. So the bailout really only kicks the can down the road. And there's reasons and incentives to start working on replacing it now. My second objection is that this benefits the owners of the plant who have been bad actors all along. Locally, I'm here next to this power plant. I never had a say in what type of power was to be used. It was just forced upon us. And the decommissioning of the plant was always going to make it uneconomical. Well, FirstEnergy is not, no longer responsible for decommissioning this plant. It has been, it was originally, but now it's a burden of the Ohio tax, going to be the burden of the Ohio taxpayer. Not only this, now their operating costs are going to become the burden of the taxpayer. So these, and they've violated our rights by promoting this corruption of the bill. I had a hard time trying to oppose the bill. I couldn't find anyone circulating a petition. Now, they haven't been accused of this, but I believe that they are behind running a totally rigged campaign there. So by bailing it out, we, we will be subsidizing the plant and subsidizing their profits. These have been bad actors all along and should not be promoted. My final objection is that if, by replacing these plants, we bring quite a bit of opportunity to Ohioans. Alternate energy is the growing number, is the number one job creator in America. We could bring, we don't have that, we don't have those companies operating in Ohio because we've gone all along with FirstEnergy. We can invite and bring those companies to Ohio and it makes job opportunities for many Ohioans to work. Hopefully I won't have to go back to work, but I am. Well, I want to thank you for my time and I hope I got my point across.
You did, and we were very, very happy to have you tonight, sir. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to hear from Jenny Williams.
Hello, my name is Jenny Williams and I'm a fellow with Alliance for Climate Education. Currently, I'm a sophomore in high school and my education is a really big part of my life. At my school, values of honesty and integrity are stressed in order to prepare my peers and I to be productive, caring members of our communities. I understand my role as a part of my community comes with a level of responsibility and trust that my educators and peers have for me. I do my best to fulfill that role as well as hold leaders in my communities responsible for their actions. So I'm often distraught when I hear about elected leaders not holding themselves accountable and not fulfilling their role in our Ohio communities. If I, as a teenager, have an expectation of honesty and integrity to uphold, why are so many politicians not holding themselves to that standard or higher? If I, as a teenager, have to stress about the future of my peers and whether or not there will be clean, breathable air, why do so many politicians feel as though they can exchange our futures for bribes? If I, as a teenager, understand the value and sanctity of human life in our planet, why can so many politicians continuously ignore the problem and go unchallenged by their peers? With the development of the corruption case involving House Bill 6, FirstEnergy in Ohio, House Speaker Larry Householder, my fears and questions are heightened. How am I supposed to trust my government officials to be productive members of my community when they are passing bills causing corruption? Why should I continuously trust our current legislators with the responsibility of my future and my community when they ignore our voices and pass bills like House Bill 6? HB6 is not a clean energy bill. It does not work for Ohioans and it is regressive and harmful. To add to this, House Bill 6 was wrongly passed by only one vote from the House along with a $61 million bribe. I'm calling on our legislators to fulfill their roles and responsibilities as leaders in our government and repeal House Bill 6. Thank you for your time.
Jenny, thank you for your time. You're certainly asking all the right questions tonight. We appreciate you being with us. Next, we'll hear from Noah Firestone, followed by Marissa Lazaroff. Noah?
Hi, thank you. So good evening and thank you for allowing me to offer my testimony. I believe the issue is unambiguous and the solution is simple. In light of the corruption surrounding its passage and the clear detriment to the public good, House Bill 6 must be repealed. Larry Householder and his co-conspirators stand accused in Ohio's biggest public bribery scheme of spending $60 million in support of House Bill 6 in service of the interests of FirstEnergy. Repealing House Bill 6 is the only way to repudiate the influence of corruption and restore the public trust. A clear and unambiguous message must be sent that corruption holds no place in Ohio politics. House Bill 6 is economically unnecessary and harmful to Ohio residents. Energy Harbor, the successor of FirstEnergy to merge from bankruptcy, having secured $1 billion in taxpayer subsidies through House Bill 6, has this year pledged to spend $800 million in stock buybacks to benefit their investors. This represents a brazen theft from hardworking Ohio citizens and businesses. This was unfair when House Bill 6 passed, but it is unconscionable in the face of the widespread economic hardship and devastation faced by Ohio families and businesses due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, getting Ohio's clean energy standards endangers Ohio's nascent clean energy sector and puts at risk clean energy jobs. Ohio cannot afford to be left in the dust as the rest of the nation and world moves toward a carbon-free future. House Bill 6's subsidy of two massive coal plants, removal of clean energy incentives, and weakening of energy efficiency standards means that the world Ohioans live in will become dirtier and less predictable. Increases in extreme weather events due to climate change will put our lives and properties at risk as well as endanger the livelihood of Ohio farmers. Ohioans will die from diseases caused by air that is dirtier than need be from the continued emissions of fossil fuel plants. For these reasons of ethics, economics, and welfare, I believe that it is imperative that House Bill 6 be repealed. Thank you.
Noah, thank you so much. We appreciate you being with us tonight. All right, finally, we are going to hear from Melissa, I'm sorry, Marissa Lazaroff. Marissa?
Can you hear me?
We can, you're all set.
Great. Mr. Governor, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Senate President, my name is Marissa Lazaroff. I am a native of Worthington and a proud Buckeye now receiving a Masters of Science in Environmental Policy at the University of Michigan School for Environment and Sustainability. I'm not only disappointed in our state and in you, but embarrassed that House Bill 6 passed and that it has not been repealed. Your negligence on this issue puts millions of lives at risk while promoting corruption, bribery, fraud, and self-interest above the planet and the people you claim to serve. Even with the federal criminal process, you cannot begin to undo the wrongs that you have done to the people of Ohio and the global community without immediately and completely repealing House Bill 6. This bill is not a clean energy bill as advertised. It has stripped our renewable energy and energy efficiency investment. This law has removed the solar carve-out of the renewable energy standard portfolio and ends the program altogether in 2026, allowing for the rise of fossil fuels in our state during the most critical time of combating climate change, all while bailing out some of the dirtiest coal plants in the region. HB6 eliminated utility efficiency programs that save consumers money on their bills. Estimates show that there could be an average increase of $7 per month in energy spending. From a basic understanding of environmental and energy justice, it is clear that this number will be felt disproportionately with heavier burden on low-income and people of color. Energy burden can be calculated as the percentage of household income that is spent on monthly energy bills. Data from the American Council for an Energy-Efficient Economy shows that Cincinnati, Cleveland, and Columbus have made the top 25 of low-income energy burden for large cities in America. Specifically in Cincinnati, the average energy burden is 8.5%. However, high quartile of energy burden for low-income households and African-American households are 15.5 and 15.6 respectively. The people of Ohio cannot afford this increase in energy spending, nor do they deserve to pay for bribery and an unnecessary bailout. There are no excuses for harming the wallets and health of the people you have been elected to serve. There are no excuses for allowing the House Select Committee on Energy and Policy Oversight to not hold public hearings and effectively disband. There are no excuses for promoting climate change and racist policies. There are no excuses for not repealing House Bill 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. What a very, very strong ending. We really appreciate you being with us. In fact, we thank all of our witnesses this evening for being with us. We appreciate you taking the time to be sure that your voices are heard regarding the repeal efforts around House Bill 6. Again, if you know someone who would like to provide remarks, please let them know that we will also be holding a hearing on Thursday, October 29th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. And registration information can be found at the bit.ly link in the chat box. Thanks again so much for your time and remarks today regarding efforts to repeal House Bill 6. We hope you enjoy the rest of your evening and good night.